Educating, informing, serving. Fact TV, keeping government honest. You're watching a Fact TV presentation of the Town of Brookline Select Board Meeting.
I'd like to begin this tonight's Select Board meeting. The date is November fifth, two, twenty twenty-three. The time is six, I think it's six forty-five-ish. Can't tell.
Yep, six forty-six.
Present in the room are Select Board members Stan Noga, Bruce Mello, Dot Madium, Paul Madalinski. Also present in the room is Highway Supervisor Mark Bills, Vanessa Vellou, our reporting clerk, and members of the public, Dan Towler and Leanne Parker. On the website, on the Zoom, we have Fact TV and John Vellou. Welcome, everyone. Sorry for the delay. We were just having some technical difficulty. We've got a time. As far as changes to the agenda, I know Samara, who couldn't be here tonight, has asked us to table eight D, the Energy Committee, and eight E, the Planning Committee, at this time. Are there any other changes to the agenda? Okay. Since Lori now was touching, she was gonna come. I told her I could share her news later on. Members of the public, Leanne Parker for the Brookline Meeting House, and I guess Dan. Do you want to wait a minute or do you want to go right away?
Well, fine, whatever you want.
All right, let's just go, let's just take two seconds. And is it about the painting and such?
It's just, just basically the things that I had submitted that you have on the agenda.
Okay.
So it's time to answer any questions.
Okay. All right, so I'm gonna go down to review and approve minutes from the regular minutes from November first, twenty twenty-three. Does anybody have any changes to page one of five? Any changes to page two or five?
Uh, you're doing the minutes?
Yes, sir.
Can we go back to page one?
Yes, sir.
Five A.
Five A.
Fourth line down. I believe each provided insurances of certificate. And Mr. Momoney provided the certificates for lead training. But I don't believe eight oh-two painting provided any verification or even training certificates.
Yes, they did.
He did.
Yes.
So this is correct.
Now left is insurance.
No, you're right. I'm sorry. Hold on.
You said, no.
Yes, you're correct.
So, so I guess on the fourth line, instead of the word, the second word in that sentence from the left, well, Mr. Momoney included certificates of insurance coverage and life certificates would be of what actually happened.
It says both included certificates of insurance.
Did not.
He did.
They both did. They both had certificates.
Of insurance.
Yes, but they didn't have the certificates of lead.
That's correct. And says and a what means.
And, and a letting, okay.
Oh, you're saying.
Okay, you're right. I'm messing it up. The latter part of the sentence is what needs to be corrected. Mr. Momoney only provided the certi- certificate.
And there wasn't a certificate of training for Monocle?
I thought so, but I don't have the original document.
Okay, you're sorry.
I would get. If I could say something, I have a certificate of attendance and successful completion of.
The training, yes, correct.
Okay, that, that.
That is the.
For eight oh-two?
Yes.
Okay, okay.
He has more to get. I thought you. I did, he's got more to get. It's not completely.
All right, okay. So there's no change in the certificate of training and.
I misunderstand.
Okay.
That communication was for him, sorry about that.
That's okay.
That was his response.
Nope.
Any changes on page two or five?
No, no.
Page three or five? Page four or five? Any changes on page five or five?
It's an A. Yeah.
Okay. All right, I'd like to make the motion to approve the minutes from Wednesday, November first, twenty twenty-three, as presented. May I have a second? Seconded by Miss Mesto Mello. Any other discussion? It's not my finger paper cut. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, thank you very much. Okay, the painting, our Brookline Meeting House project, review the certificates to references and vote to award the bid or to table it again. Also, we need to talk about the work change order for the BMH sale repair and any other concerns. So I'll let Leanne, if you wanna.
All right, I wanted to just report that our last BMH committee meeting, the, there was pretty much unanimous support for eight oh-two painting. So long as they have, and you see that the certificates needed, and so long as the bid sixteen, and part of it is because of the, the bid that he has, the sixteen or the seventeen sixty versus the twenty-three. So we're just concerned about, about being able to pay for it. So wanted to bring that up.
I can ask Mr. Mello a question, because I asked him to do a little bit of research. What has, how much more work does eight oh-two need to do in order to?
Yes.
Because this is not until September, or we don't have to have this project done for, for six, seven, eight months yet. So will he be able to complete his training?
He's giving us the response, and I sent out a wall to you that he's gonna try and go and get all those done.
Oh, so he will get it done?
As we said.
Okay.
But he doesn't have it done now. So basically, he submitted this bid incomplete.
Right. But for seven or eight thousand dollars, you might wanna wait.
I have a question. I have a question about why. I mean, I, I got the email, you know, the thing that you sent about the priorities that were set. It seemed to me that the mold remediation would take precedence over painting the steeple. So I'm wondering how this steeple got to be the thing that is the next thing that will do spend fifteen grand on.
I think just because that's the way up until we got the mold information that we were moving ahead of this people. We just been. So I think it's a valid discussion.
Yeah.
Especially in light of the the Ciccio report, put the, put the painting down as middle importance, not most important. He puts the mold down as the most important. And this is why we wanted to kind of wait to set the priorities until we got the Ciccio report. It didn't fall like that.
Well, I mean, can we change that or?
It's certainly.
So I, I'd like to put that forward, that we maybe think about that.
Oh, we can, we don't have to accept any bid.
Right. At this point.
At this point, we have no requirement to accept the bid.
I mean, did you all read the?
Yes, I did.
I didn't read the assessment, no. I just.
That's totally accurate.
I was at a meeting this morning for three hours.
We're gonna really, this really comes down to dollars and cents. Because if we don't have money to do both, we're gonna wanna do the one that's the most priority. That's understandable. But given what I said, the mold issue hasn't been resolved. I read that thoroughly. I read Jan's, Jan's reaction. I have some ideas and I'm not, I'm certainly against spending seventeen days, eighteen hours to analyze mold. I think, I think that's just, that's the chart.
It was more like, it wasn't.
Three thousand to do the analysis, to give us a baseline. And then it was the green home cleaning that came in and gave us an estimate for, for remediating to getting rid of the mold. So the first step is find out what we have going on.
Well, to remove, if it's on the sanctuary, inside sanctuary, that's done by painters, bleach. That gets rid of that. This, that's not the problem. Problem is finding out the cause of what it's causing. And that gets really involved a bit, and we don't have the time to do that right now.
I, I thought that he had listed around, what, fifteen hundred or three thousand?
Well, when he, when he was gonna do both the assessment and the, the analysis with the additional consultant that he was gonna bring in, I think it was like twenty-seven hundred dollars or something like that. That now we have it down at three thousand, which means that he, he has to make another visit. So that's why it's not twenty-seven hundred minus the thousand that we've already paid him. So.
It wouldn't be the same man making the mold remediation. He had suggested another person.
Yeah, he had suggested going in with another person that is a mold expert.
Right.
And that's the goal for, for three thousand. And that's, that was what he wanted to do the very first thing before we did anything, because we have to find out the source before we can figure out the remedy.
Can I understand a little clearer exactly which we're getting from that? Two thousand dollars?
We didn't order anything.
No, no, I said we did.
What were we getting? That's a question I have. Because when you go in and look at the mold remediation process and how you rate it, how you rate the mold, et cetera, et cetera, there is not a recognized methodology to determine the level of mold that you have in a building. You can measure the humidity in the air, but there's no recognized format. So I guess the mold is there. We put, I can, in my own mind, know why it's there. If you've ever been down in the crawl space, it is wet. And there's awful mud at certain times of the year down there. So the water is either, when it comes off the roof, as he mentioned drip line, some of that may be seeping down to a level that where the, the, the level of the, it's actually kind of like a lawn. It's not sand, but as he's described it, it's, it's like a lawn would be when you take the grass up. It's, there's organic material in there. And when I crawled around in there years ago, I came out with mud on my knees, mud on the front of my suit, because, and this was like in June, which should have been a little dry by then, it wasn't. And so it's, you know, and there was no other source, and I actually been down there after that. There's no other source of moisture that appears to be getting in there, other than it's somehow entering that crawl space, and it is amongst the material that's consistent for the lawn, whatever you want to call it. So I believe that's the source of it. My, and when I spoke and made the effort to call Mr. Wondowski, who had done the original report, he said, since the, the jury is out. He said there, nobody knows whether it would hurt or, or help to put vapor barrier down on that floor. But I don't know, you know, if someone else has observation that might indicate where water and moisture is coming from. It would be nice to hear that. I, I can't attribute it to anything but what is in that crawl space, however the moisture is getting in there.
Well, I thought you said that it's water coming up the roof going.
Well, I don't know if it is. He, he made mention that he conceivably it could be.
In the report.
Yeah, you don't, you don't actually see a place where the water comes in when you're down there. It goes large stones and make up the foundation. You don't see any traces of between the cracks, material that the water has brought in with it. It's, it appears to be pretty decent. The only place that you see water is.
Not floor.
On the floor.
Well, that's, that's a problem Jan had with it, is if we plasticize, we could force it to creep up the wall. And I, I gave thought to, Jan, you want to say something?
Well, yeah, just that Mr. Ciccio, in the course of his research into the building, strongly urged us to hire this consultant that we knew of for the three grand to analyze the moisture issues in the building and suggest remedial action. He's apparently an expert in this sort of thing. I don't know anything else about him, but that was his recommendation then. So.
Yeah, I saw that.
I don't know.
I disagree with him frankly, but that's, you know.
Well, we can all decide.
Each of us has our own opinions. So, you know, if you're asking me what my opinion is, I think you're wasting money by doing that. The repair of the mold in my book is what ought to happen, which allows use of it. If you're gonna take three thousand dollars out of the seventeen, or whatever's gonna be down, you know, and we don't have a lot of money to spread around. So it's a matter of, in my mind, and I may not agree with everybody, just primary, it's my priority.
I have a good idea. Several things. First of all, it's obvious, everybody wants to like put the painting aside for a second. This is no rush, without a doubt. There's no rush. We could do this, this next meeting of the weekend, meeting after, excuse me, for the RFP. Let's put that aside for a second. I think it's really important, because everybody's concerned about it, as well as I am. I have been since for eight years on how to resolve this. I had an idea, and I don't know if it's right, but I think if we followed some of our idea, ideas and did them before we did the painting, we can determine if we have an issue on our own, rather than throwing a lot of money at somebody that thinks it's gonna go on. And I'll give you a prime example. And you, you really hit it right on. I, I thought that maybe it was dry down there, I had no idea. I've been down there once. Okay, so saying what you're saying is true. If we were to plasticize the floor, okay? But we see it all the way around the perimeter. Now, what will happen here is in two, three months, we could go up there and take a look and see how it looks, see where the water's going. I think personally, and, and this is an educated guess at the most, that Jan, Jan went on to it and when he was, when the quote was given in the assessment, that ventilation and heat that's causing your problem base probably. Because we have no ventilation and, and it's a plus to have the new windows. Because we can open up in the summer, we've never had that before, just screens and everything else. And we also have no insulation in the cap, so we have no way to keep the heat in, which is a problem, because if we're gonna heat the place, we want insulation. So it's a multifaceted problem. And of course, we could have heat pumps in there and just blast them every once in a while. And I pretty much think that if that was done, we wouldn't have this problem. I remember about a year or two after I got on the board, and Peter and I were opening up the room, and the day that you went in there with a sponge mop and did that whole lie. It hadn't gotten worse. And I'll tell you why it hasn't gotten worse, because we, I think, I've gotta watch where I'm standing here, is because we've been ventilating the building a lot.
That was.
Well, that's, that's, that's my spiel. It's a, I think it's a work in progress. And I, I guess I won't think, I don't wanna be a replacement mechanic here, just throw things at it and hope it works, and throw money at it. I think a big idea to try ideas and see if it works. In the meantime, get the RFP approved. There's no tariff with the RFP. It's not until the September of next year or October, whenever we, we choose, and in the meantime, try and solve it.
Stan?
Yeah, I just had one other thought, and I, and I've thought about this a lot. Has, has the committee, or would you mind someone else? If you, if you don't have time, calling the historical people and get names of other churches where they've had this problem, and look at what they did and what it resulted in, so that we don't need to reinvent the wheel by having this company come in and tell us what someone else already knows?
I think we can just look on their, and sort of preservation side to see where the awards have been going.
However you do it, it's fine, you know, I'm just thinking about it. Why can't we do that?
I think that's.
You got a point, because you start making forecasts of six, eight of these people. When we had that problem and all of a sudden you say you're sort of, but, but what was mine?
Okay. I'm gonna.
We're probably taking part.
Dan, when we got the bid for the assessment from Mr. Ciccio, there was an unsolicited additional three thousand dollars mediation or review that the board felt we weren't, it was above our purchase policy and we couldn't break it apart. So that's what we said, we're not gonna look at that, just look at what the assessment was, to answer your question. So at this point, the, I had made at the last meeting, and it was voted down to approve the bid. So at this point, are we going to table the bid for the painting on the, do I have a motion from someone?
Yeah, I'm gonna table one.
Say, say your vote.
I'm trying to figure out dates and times. We're saying today's the year.
Fifteen.
So our next meeting is the sixth.
Why do we, we don't, we can do this in February.
Sure.
Just table it.
Just table it. And in the meantime, try to come up with a resolution.
Appreciate your patience.
Definitely, it's somebody gonna get, we think we owe it the getting back to any of these.
Oh, I have my responsibility to, to the competitors, would be that, right? Because I'm also been dealing with contract connect, all the, the, the companies that read the app ads, and they wanna know who received the bids and so on. So I have, yeah, so that's my responsibility. So I have, is there a motion on the floor to table the painting? So I'll make the motion next. I'll make a motion that we table, we do not award the bid for painting at this time, and that we table it until further notice.
I'll say that.
Seconded by Paul. Any others comments?
I think we're being prudent in doing that and, and doing it for, for the best in that respect.
Stan? This, this person, this expert that was gonna, that Hope was thinking about doing, I'd be curious to ask him. Well, if you find something, like, what are you, what are you looking for, for characteristics? And based on what those characteristics might be, what, what are you going to be able to tell us or determine?
Right. Well, I, I also thought maybe it would be a little more interesting to give them a call and see if they got it. And explain what his methods are, so that we can have an exchange of them and ask our partners there and be a little bit more informed too. I can tell you that I'll reach out to find that note, to find his name, and I'll reach out.
Any other discussions?
I just got very quick last one. I just want everybody to keep in mind, steeple has nothing to do with mold, mold remediation, other than the cost, you know? That's it.
And steeple was being done because we just repaired it.
My, my feeling about this is like, you know, I think of the parable of white and sepulcher. It looks good on the outside and it's rotten on the inside. And I think that the mold issue should be solved before the spend money.
Okay.
Cosmetics.
Yeah, but I don't think there's a mold issue up in that section, I'm not sure. Always have a chance.
Any other discussions? Hearing none, all those in favor, favoring until further note, until further reading, time and date to be announced for the painting projects on the church steeple doors and shutters, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, there's unanimous for the floor. We're gonna table, and I will contact the two vendors that, and the, about that. All right, thank you. I think that's the point. While your peers, Leanne, you had some, we're gonna, let's under new business, but we can, you wanna, we can do the new business as well. The Brookline Meeting House is looking to develop their end of year fundraising letter, and they are going to need postage and printing fees, reimbursement or advancement of those fees?
It'll be a reimbursement for postage. The postage will be around, the most recent quote I have, the postage will be around one seventy-four, so I'll have to pay that and then get reimbursed by you. The other quote for the mailings, which is just going to New Haven, Brookline this year, so that amount is lower this year at four hundred dollars. We're gonna ask them to add the residences, there's, I mean, the businesses in New Haven, so that's only eleven more, you know, places. So the cost isn't gonna change much. We are gonna need to buy twenty-five dollars worth of stamps for mailing out letters to people outside of the area that have donated in the past. So it's gonna be more, more like around seven fifteen or, or, or seven twenty, I think, all in all. It won't be a seven fifty.
I'm gonna make a motion that the board approves the reimbursement of funds for the Brookline Meeting House end of year fundraising letter and postage and mailing up to an amount not to exceed seven hundred and fifty dollars. May I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Stan. Any other discussion?
Yeah, where does that money come from?
Comes from the Brookline Meeting House account.
Okay, sure.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of approving the reimbursement of the funds necessary to, to provide the fundraising letter, postage, mailing materials, stamps, up to an amount not to exceed seven hundred and fifty dollars, signify by saying aye. Aye, any opposed? All right, that reimbursement is A-OK.
Great.
Um, let's talk about the holiday sing-along.
Unfortunately, we have not yet heard back from the organist. He was all for it, and now she's not returning calls. So we will be in discussion on the twenty-eighth of November at our next meet, meeting. Basically, just doing an open house, doing a nice decoration inside the church, opening the doors for welcome open house, and we have hot cider and cookies in the heated room. Probably an hour and a half time. I'm not saying this is for certain, I wanna go back now that we don't have the organ.
Well, you know, I know an organist.
They can play a punk organ?
Oh, yeah.
What's his name?
His name is, he works for.
Seth Phoenix.
You know?
Oh, oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, I know because Ned Phoenix came out.
He was the organist.
He's Ned's younger brother.
Okay.
Played with church.
Yeah.
Then that was all, yeah, went at home. You can look up on YouTube Seth Phoenix, and you'll be impressed. Well, all I wanna know is if he has a repertoire of holiday music that he would want us to be able to share with us.
Sure.
Great, thank you very much.
Yeah.
That would be great. So we're just looking for enough to pay, this request for two hundred was to pay Amy a hundred dollars for her time and any other donations that came in, maybe to boost that, and then a hundred to pay for things like ingredients to make those cookies. People wanted to turn in receipts and, and stuff like that. So we're not looking for over two hundred dollars, and it might be half that.
So you wanna contact Sky or?
Yeah, I'll go to Julia, and Julia Duke was kind of in charge of getting hold of Amy. So I'll just go back to her first, unless you have a hotline to him.
Well, I mean, if he works for the, you know, we see a chiropractor, he's working, he's there.
Norwegian Wellness.
Yeah, Norwegian Wellness. So if you called Norwegian Wellness, then, and a message, either guys, that could probably be talking to him.
Well, that'd be great, because he, he come out and looked at the organ and see if he's.
Yeah.
But his brother came and did the whole analysis of the organ and played the organ too. So they're organ family, apparently. I'm sure he knows how to pull all the, out all those stops and make a whole thing work. So I appreciate that. I'll pass that on to, to Julia.
Yeah.
Okay, so if it's okay, I'm gonna make a motion to approve the reimbursement of up to two hundred dollars to the Brookline, for the Brookline Meeting House holiday sing-along at the meeting house later on in December. Up to two hundred dollars. May I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Bruce Mello. Any discussion? The safe receipt, you know that, Leanne, right? Yeah. All right, any other discussion? We're having, all those in favor of approving a reimbursement of up to two hundred dollars for the holiday sing-along at the Brookline Meeting House, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? All right, motion is approved. Okay, item C, discuss funding the steeple project costs over ten thousand. Is that a move that's like at this point? Okay, so this is M-O-O-T on my notes here. Anything else that we have? Thank you for bumping us ahead. And the tips.
Thank you.
We're gonna work together.
Yeah, I wanna say, I've been attending some workshops on, on, you know, community engagement and stuff, and what you guys are doing in the meeting house is what we call social economy and cultural economy. And I think it's very important that you can, that we continue and support that. So go Meeting House. Great, thank you very much.
Okay.
Okay.
And thank you for sending an article about that small town vision. That was, that was nice.
Yeah.
Thank you, guys.
Yeah.
Yeah.
See you later.
Appreciate all you did.
I guess I'll go back up to unfinished build business and then go down to the new business. All right, on that, work change order for the Brookline Meeting House, so repaired. Did we get one filled down by Mr., there's a form.
Okay.
Because I asked you if you would get it, and you were saying, and you said that you.
I emailed you back saying I'd do whatever you wanted to do. If you wanted to do it, go ahead. If not, and I never heard anything back.
Yeah.
So I'm sorry.
There's, okay, so I'm gonna let Stan do it.
Good.
Okay. Which you can.
That doesn't hurt my feelings at all.
The.
Is that a matter of talking to Terry?
It's a form that we put with the contract, because it was an additional cost above and beyond what the original contract amount was. We did a work order change for the additional three thousand dollars, and then the three hundred dollar additional vapor barrier. So this would be for the sill, we're adding it to the cost of that. Now, we don't know, is that coming from ARPA funds, or is it going to be coming from the Meeting House funds? That's something that has to be decided at some point.
The matter, maybe.
Okay.
So I mean, is Terry never gonna get it up or what?
Well, the contract you can't change unless you formally execute a change order that everybody agrees to, so everybody knows them on the same page, figuratively speaking.
So he writes that up and?
So, no, we write it up, and we fill it in with the data that he gave us. And all we need from him at this point is to know what the, the, the seal work is that he's doing, cause that's the elevated surprise, so to speak.
Yeah, Kerry said it would be materials and labor. So he has to identify the materials used and the amount of labor for the reported change, and we don't know if it's a. Three thousand dollar sale or whatever it costs, so he has to provide that. All right, so Stan, you'll do that for us for the next meeting, maybe?
Yep.
Okay. Okay.
Sorry about that, I.
That's all right, cause you.
We're all human, we're all human, fortunately.
We're gonna talk about the tree list on December twentieth, but did you?
That would take more than a day.
So you want a, a request for proposal for winter tree work? And you're saying that there's at least one to two days worth of work, and it's approximately. About approximately three thousand dollars a day of work.
Yeah, what I've done before is driven the trees and then anybody can come with me and look. And. Like, the car tree, for instance, they came in and worked for a whole day. They didn't get all the trees, but we got a full days.
So, my question is, since our, our, our purchase policy is two thousand five hundred dollars. We have to do an RFP. So we're looking for, am I RFPing for one day of tree work or two days of tree?
I think we start with one and see.
One day.
See how much gets accomplished and if there's not enough for a second day, I'll identify more. But what I've done is, there's so much out there.
Oh, we could probably do ten days worth.
Priority, you know, who wants the most added to this first.
How's that affect them coming back a second time, like, there's a bidding commerce around the stick.
Well, we would probably RFP. Or just identify a number of trees and say do on a second day, same price. Just make sure the workload is there for another folding, not.
Can he come out and tell you whether there's two full days worth of work there to save the guesswork?
He probably could.
Anybody have a problem with that?
You know.
No, that's why I thought it was gonna be.
Not, not all trees are free. Some are a little more tricky than. But knowing that's what they do, they probably could estimate.
Yeah, I'd say, I'd suggest doing that.
So you have or have not driven the trees?
I haven't ridden them, but I, I have a list and.
Okay.
But we wanna go forward with, you know, having an RFP, without, I will do the ribbons then.
All right, so I'll, I'll work, I'll develop an RFP for the board to approve at our December sixth meeting. And then. Okay, and then we'll get it in the newspaper and then. That is Christmas.
And we have the money budgeted for this or there's?
Okay. Let's go Dan, number of trees versus number of days are, or, all right, item D, FEMA's forty-six twenty-one. Forty-six twenty-one is what Samara was working on and she has, she left in our mailbox. Category C contract work materials. I can make copies, I didn't.
Do it if you'd like to continue on, whatever. Everybody want one? No, okay, you've probably got it all.
No, she would need it for the minutes, okay. So. So from what I understand, Samara and Melissa and Stan has worked on it as well, trying to pull out all of the information. For doing the final. Obligation of funding for the twenty twenty-one storm. Which is what Stan is running off now. We'll get that in before our deadline of the twenty, of December and then, oh wait. Getting some money back.
We're just waiting on days and bills.
We have not invoiced, they have not invoiced us yet, that's the only thing outstanding, but their job is done.
Did you receive the email from Katie Buckley about the? There are ways you can get paid.
Talk about that, since Thomas Lepford. Did you, Stan? Was this November? Did you get something from Katie Buckley that talked about getting money? I, I didn't understand what the view is and, and actually, at this point, I don't think we have time to get into, into that. But that's not, that's for the, there's a workshop that you can attend.
Right.
To, to hear about. That's getting a loan through the, just getting a loan through the Vermont Municipal Bond.
The topic I'm meeting is things is bills while waiting for FEMA reimbursement.
Right, and when is, when is the meeting?
November fourteenth, day one. And then the eleventh, the second, Tuesday of each month.
At one point, I had pursued all of those options in terms of contacting everybody that I could think of.
Right.
And we were told there wasn't anything, you know, the only thing you can do is borrow. Okay, all right, well, if we're in a situation that requires that at this point, I'd say I'd attend. But if we're gonna be paid shortly by the end of, by the middle of January or something, it may not be necessary to go there and spend the time based on everything else.
Right, and what I read is that if, if they suggested if you already taken on a loan, you may wanna refinance the loan.
There's always good loan, but this particular email mentioned for twenty twenty-three.
Twenty twenty-three.
It may not.
For twenty twenty-one.
Yeah.
All right, the next storm is forty-seven twenty, which was the summer's July storm and.
We're meeting the twenty-eighth of this month to go over it with.
That's right.
Michael Berancy.
November twenty, all right, I'm just gonna move on, the next item.
What you have for that meeting, a summary of everything that you wanna do?
Yeah.
And what the cost might be? Or?
I've made summaries, I, I don't know how to go about the estimate, that's something we should talk about before that meeting.
Okay.
And since you brought that up, I did meet with Colin Bratton yesterday. And he would like to. From the board, he, he sent an email out against.
Yeah.
He would like to see excuses, grants, to do some of this FEMA repair, but. Either way, I feel like we have to wait for the hydraulic study. Get them about before we can, the suing thing, so. I'm not sure what steps to take. Yeah. So if, the other thing is, what's more feasible, having FEMA reimburse it? I don't know what the. And full or percentage is, as opposed to what the grants are like. Twenty percent paid back.
He was talking forty thousand, fifty thousand, sixty thousand, so we're, we're, we're looking at at least, you know.
And I think he's way under, because if those end up being boxed over, fifty thousand is only gonna. Forget somebody, they're gonna be a hundred.
Yeah.
So we'd like to make note that the storm that we had this summer, we did not have an active hazard mitigation plan in place. As we did with the other storms, it had expired, so the maximum reimbursement is only seventy-five percent. And it's not the ninety or a hundred percent that we're gonna see with the other, mu-much of the other storm. But that was a more severe storm for us.
Well, I think it's something to be weighed out as there.
Yeah, yeah.
Knowing which phrase to go, because if we go with grants, we're gonna have to budget for our presenting with paper.
That's right.
Yeah. And that could be twenty thirty.
And he looks like he's talking possibly two, three years out, so.
Some of those grants are, the B grants and if you're bigger window, but still. There's a lot of, you know, the concrete appraisals. I don't know, I can't. Somebody to come and, and, and appraisals.
And some of the things that we've been talking about in hazard mitigation planning is also looking at the same call. So we're looking at it with multiple sets of glasses here, and so we're not sure which is the best format to follow. So hopefully between Wyndham Regional and you're talking with Patrick, Michael.
Well, you, you know, we've got what, six or seven for this last storm, when you look at the total dollar amount. That FEMA has forecast these things to cost, it's about eighty-three thousand dollars.
Right.
So to see some other person come and say, no, that one's gonna be sixty.
Yeah.
I'm thinking, what?
Yeah.
Oh.
He did this like, in a half a day, put these numbers together and. And I'm thinking, wow, that was fast, I didn't expect anything back from him for, you know, a week. And so I, I think those numbers, like, like, you know, I'll make some copies. Of what I wanted to see for mitigations, but I have no idea what the number would be.
Okay, thank you.
FEMA just wants to pay, put it back to. But I don't think it's, I think if we're gonna fix it, it should be for the future.
Well, the thing I don't understand is he's given us to the fourteenth of January to finalize some of the info that we need to put into him. We're not gonna have these hydraulic studies. So I gotta, I gotta find out from him, either email or something, what's going on, what do we need to do and how do we need to handle it? Extension, as you just said, or.
Some of that will, will have to have A and R's equivalent engineered. You know, I guess Wyndham Regional is gonna do paperwork and, and help study each site. So that it properly put together, but I think his numbers are way under.
I'm gonna jump back to the previous storm, forty-six twenty-one, do we need to ask Megan Brunk to come and? Okay, all of our work or is FEMA going to take our word for it?
I'm gonna wait to, that's a really good question, it's necessary to answer, I'm glad you thought of that, that's good. Well, you know, we, as I understand it, it needed to go in the letter that I sent this morning, or yes, yesterday, last night. To, to Patrick, and at some point, when he's satisfied, I believe he tells Vermont, it's okay. And then him orders it from Megan, if I understand it correctly, but I will confirm that.
All right, anything else on FEMA storms? Wait, tomorrow afternoon, Stan and I are going to meet and work on the mitigation grant application. That is due in the beginning of December and what, what time is gonna be good for you tomorrow?
I, I can do it at your convenience, whenever it's good for you, let me know.
In the afternoon, cause like I said, six.
Three, two?
Let's say two thirty.
All right.
All right, two thirty, tomorrow afternoon, this way Guy has his office hours. And I'll help you fill out that, that application.
Good.
Okay.
Well, we gotta decide what you, what, what things to apply for first, before we fill anything.
Oh, okay.
If we don't decide on anything in terms of. Got this one for, for FEMA, and we were saying we want this one through this entity. We may not, we may just sit tight, I don't know.
Yeah.
It needs discussion, that's a good worth discussing.
Okay. Okay, back then, it's new business, I'm just gonna go down to item D, since we already did A, B, and C, item D. Around schoolhouse, around schoolhouse, Lauren now is gonna come, but there's seeds prints, round school. We have. Quite a few of them that have never been sold, I haven't reviewed the price, we just wanted to get it on record. Cause we have a fundraising policy that we would like to start advertising to sell them for ten dollars apiece. And also there are round schoolhouse sweatshirt, children's sweatshirts, we'd like to advertise, start selling them for five dollars. That they've been Cynthia now ordered years ago and they, the stock, this, there's a surplus that we did. Uh, no, it's not this image, it's a round schoolhouse silhouette, they're dark green. And they have a pencil drawing of the round schoolhouse and it's. So five dollars, cause they're older and ten dollars for the prints.
Okay, I think if you upgraded and got new sweatshirts.
Well, we wanna get rid of the old ones, but yes.
Would be a good fundraiser.
Yes, but right now, just, you just have a, a case. A box like this filled with sweatshirts.
And if anybody wants to donate more, they can, correct?
Absolutely, yes, but I just would like to be able to put it out there.
Good idea, cause I'm sitting here.
So I'm gonna make a motion that we approve the selling of the prints for ten dollars and the sweatshirts for five dollars. In fundraising for the round schoolhouse, and seconded by Paul, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, take it up by saying aye, all right, aye. Motion passes, thank you, we're done, all right, now into budget development. That's a magnifying glass. Okay. So, and we were asked to take a look at the. Revenue section of. This. Going down the list. All right, I, I sent out earlier, I, I, I know we have some finance stipends that we pay. I didn't know if anybody wanted to increase any of the stipends that currently existed. Stipend positions, I said we're gonna be covering that in a few minutes. Our five hundred dollars for the building commission, our highway grants, tunnel decks, animal control, road commissioner, chair of select board. And the select board members stipend, is, before we start, has anybody had any consideration about changing any of the stipends? They haven't been changed in quite a while.
In light of what's happened last year. I would say. Less is more.
Anybody else have an opinion?
I, I'm not sure I'm prepared to do that at this time, in that I'd like to get a feel for how the other things in the budget are gonna manifest themselves. If, if there's flexibility, I mean, to go through what I personally have gone through this year. With the FEMA stuff, both storms. And the coordinating of it, and then, and then getting all of this grant stuff coming at you at once. On top of the other problems that we've had, I, it, it just. I'm, I'm, I'm starting to feel, I mean, I love what I do in a way, I like helping my fellow human being. As cranky as I get sometimes. But, but I don't know if I would continue or feel happy about doing it for twelve hundred dollars.
I, I hear you, all right, well, let's, we don't, we don't have to talk about salaries at this time, we have select board was the first one on the list, that's why I brought it up. And then the town clerk wages, town clerk wages were just increased. So we should, we could leave this, I don't know, how would you like me to do this?
Anyone talk to Guy, see if he's coming back?
He's running for election, he's, it's not that he comes back.
She's worked out, worked on, you talked to him and he's.
A while ago, but things can change, it's whether or not he runs for election.
I was in the room with that discussion, while, while that discussion happened, I don't get the opinion. That, what I say to him, what, I don't get the opinion, I have the opinion, that guy is ready to vote for it, no, that's what I think.
But anyway, it's a position, not a person that we have to look at here, so. Town clerk wages were increased recently, I don't see any need to increase them again this year. Treasurer wages were also increased this year, I don't see any. Treasurer wages were also increased this year. I don't see any.
We're budgeting a twenty-five-nine-four-four.
Twenty-five-nine-four-four was the fiscal year for the current budget, correct, with, with raise.
Okay, got it.
Okay.
Alright, sorry.
Treasurer wages are currently budgeted for eleven thousand five hundred dollars.
That was an increase if I recall.
Well, so is there any need to increase it again? I have zero, my question. Uh, the liquid tax collector.
Okay, go ahead.
Is, uh, budgeted at three thousand dollars. Again, that was the same, that's the same rate. Any need to increase that at this time anymore? No. Listers wages, I would like the board to consider increasing the lister's wages. They have been raised in, I don't know how many years. It's a sixteen dollars per person. Um, one of the things that, uh, other towns do is they annually. Continue to add fifty cents a year to a salary guide. And I don't know if this board is, would be interested in doing that.
I am.
I, I think it should go. I agree. I don't know about fifty cents though.
But yeah, I, I think I would like to see it go up a dollar because it hasn't been raised in eight years. I don't ever remember listeners going up.
I could support that.
I do.
So, um. So the listed, so, uh, how do you?
Well, I have it going at sixty-five hundred. As opposed to five, five thousand.
Six thousand five hundred dollars?
No.
How much per hour?
Oh, that I don't know.
That's what we have to, uh, look at the average number of hours and do them all. So we're looking at increasing the wage to seventeen dollars an hour.
What is it now?
Sixteen now.
How would I incur with that?
At this time, this, we concur to raise it to seventeen dollars an hour. And determine. What historically, how many hours that they're working and, and figured it out that way. So we can come back to that, but we can give that to, uh.
Okay.
For an analysis. The auditors are budgeted for, uh, nine hundred dollars. Um, they didn't actually ask for any reimbursement last year, it appeared, but I would still like to keep it at nine hundred dollars. In case they do put in for that without any increase.
Yeah, I would too.
It's assistant town clerk wages, again, that has not gone up. Uh, at all, and that is also at sixteen dollars an hour. I would like to see that go to seventeen dollars an hour. It's an extra dollar an hour at this time. Uh, it's a position.
Yeah.
Maybe just referring with that. So go up a dollar an hour.
How much of an increase is that in the budget there?
Um.
Cause I just kind of.
I.
Pretty much over with what was there.
I'm, I don't understand what your question is.
My question is, what was that? What was, how much money are we talking about?
Here that says approximately how many hours a year that that position is actually, let's get my calculator.
Hmm, six thousand four hundred and forty years by sixteen.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
I had the payroll, I'd be able to tell you how many, um, yeah, but not give it to us, or. On my phone? Yeah, no.
Oh.
There was something, it wasn't right, um.
Four hundred and twenty-two point five hours a year.
I'm sorry, say it again?
Uh, I divided the sixty-seven sixty, which is this last year's, uh, budget by sixteen dollars. And it was four hundred and twenty-two point five hours.
Yeah, so we'd be increase up, let's say up to five hundred dollars a year. Correct? If it's four hundred and twenty-two hours at a dollar an hour or twenty-two, no more than five hundred dollars annual.
Okay.
So plus five hundred.
Plus seventy-two.
Yep.
Plus, let's say five hundred fifty. Okay, uh, administrative assistant, we haven't, um. We're gonna be discussing that at the next meeting, so I'm gonna ask if we table that one at this time. That's on the December sixth meeting date. Election officials next year is a presidential election, um, and it looks like. We didn't budget anything for it this year. Last year was close to five hundred dollars. Uh, do you think we should maybe budget six hundred dollars for the elections for this coming year?
Sounds like, I can say at least five hundred.
Yeah, uh, yeah.
Who all gets paid for that?
Guy, Tamsa, and, and his, uh.
And Gwen.
You see her all.
Yeah, we're primary as well, or that would be included in it?
Yeah, that's a good question.
Since that they sit at. And any, okay.
Yeah, so they're gonna do it twice. They might wanna ask him what would be usable, you know, uh, if it's twice a year, an election year. You're right, you're gonna have two, two, two counting periods next this coming year, right?
Right. So, um, do you want me to hold, hold us?
Uh, yeah, I don't think we have enough information to know exactly what would keep everybody happy.
Assistant treasurer, uh, the assistant treasurer has been making twenty dollars an hour. Is, this would be one of the positions I could see, uh, going to, uh. Fifty cent, uh, you know, doing a so- smaller increase.
Uh, Sister Judy, we're talking.
Yes, ma'am, sir.
See, the thing, thing that Samara was talking about, um, cause I went over the budget with her this, this, this afternoon.
Oh, thanks.
And Judy is gonna be leaving. Ooh, when? Uh, in Ju- I think July?
Yeah, she wants to finish out the fiscal, she was talking about finishing out the fiscal year. And she has provided me a list of the administrative duties that she does that are not treasurer related. So some of her hours have been doing select word administrative work, which is.
So anyway, what, what she was talking about was combining, um, assistant treasurer with the, um. Select board and admin assistant.
That's, yeah.
And making it like one position.
Yes.
And we could, you know, combine those two. Items and come up with, you know, a pretty much a halftime position.
Um, I know that Melissa Brown, if she was interested in being reappointed as our treasurer, could do the payroll. And could do the accounts payable for the town. And then all the other things that Judy does could be put on the administrative assistant.
Yeah, well, I think that the administrative assistant also could pick up some of the load of what Stan's doing.
Oh, yeah, there's a lot stuff besides those things.
But I don't stating the obvious. I would discuss that out with, uh, Melissa. If you have a definitive idea of doing that, then they would have to approach the, the increase in salaries as a result of it. They just go back and honor, would you, right? They're not just gonna. Give them more responsibilities for the same price as I'm paying.
It's by hour. So if you do more work, it takes longer to do, you get paid more.
Yeah. But she said she wanted more.
She, have you noticed the amount of hours here for the treasurer wages is way down because she's. Three thousand dollars out of the eleven thousand five hundred that we budgeted.
Hmm.
If you notice that there's not much factual in the twenty fiscal year twenty twenty-three, that Melissa does, can do things faster.
You're good.
Remember, we had five different treasurers. Short period of time.
Yeah.
And so when you're efficient, you can get things done.
This treasurer. There is treasurer wages. Okay, and you said she's down. It was budgeted.
I don't have the experience in terms of seeing what the year-to-date is.
Fiscally year twenty twenty-three, period twelve.
There's only thirty-one hundred.
Oh, okay, I see what you're looking at.
Thirty-one eighty-seven dollars. Losing in there.
That's a big difference.
That, that's. That's for years, just one period.
Right, it's for the year.
So that's what you were saying, was down that much? Is that what you meant by that? Uh.
That.
Because the budget.
We're down, it's just in treasure, are we doing?
No, I was, I was looking at the treasure, cause you, we've brought it up about the additional possibilities from Melissa.
Additional work.
I meant work.
Yes.
Are you telling me that, well, the budget was for ninety-five hundred dollars last year, we just spent thirty-one eighty-seven? That was, that was the same for.
But it sounds like.
For treasure?
Yes.
So that's what you were saying before, I'm just trying to, I'm gonna say if that's correct. And you're saying go to eleven-five with that. So we've already increased it.
Basically twenty-five, yes, we've increased the salary last year.
That's what that is.
She started in July at the, the town clerk and the treasurer started in July at a higher rate, twenty-three dollars an hour.
Okay, so you've been, this is obviously based off the hour, and she's not taking as long to do the work as we thought.
Alright.
Okay. We have to.
Seems like too much of it. I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, you, I already go.
It, it just seems like too much of a difference. You're not betting that many hours. I'm wondering if it, this is actually, since she started in, uh. April, basically, it's April to June. And not period twelve. Period twelve would be what, the, the last twelve months of the fiscal year?
No.
Or the twelve year of the annual. Twelve.
Twelve, twelve month.
Cause I just seen how.
Twelve months.
She can't be doing that many hours less. I just, I mean, maybe she is, it just doesn't seem logical.
But we just fired her in March.
Yeah.
We just fired her in March.
That's what I'm saying.
Yeah, so July, August, September, October, November, December, January, February. So she did not work for us for eight months.
Uh-huh.
And that's why.
Okay.
March, April, May, June, she made three thousand.
Right, right.
Right, I'm sorry.
Twelve hundred dollars a month, basically.
Right, this is based on from March.
Uh, eleven hundred.
Okay.
Right.
Times twelve.
Also then that money is really not. It really should be eleven-five.
Yeah. Yeah.
Right.
Thirteen-two, actually, or close to that.
Yeah, so I would read the treasurer's wage as is.
Yeah.
And then we're down at the assistant treasurer, um. Which has an equal amount of money budgeted for the assistant treasurer's position. The assistant treasurer, if the assistant treasurer's workload goes down and it's picked up by the treasurer, then. It just slides into that, it gets paid from the same pot.
Yeah. We just have to. Doesn't the treasurer make more money for hours than the assistant?
I would think so.
Yes, she makes twenty-three dollars an hour and the treasurer is, and assistant treasurer is making twenty dollars an hour.
Yeah, so if it's, if it's an hour, same amount of hours, it's gonna cost more. We all have an hour more.
Correct.
Technically, legally, do we have to have a formal elected assistant or appointed assistant treasurer? I'm just thinking of for combining roles.
I think so.
As an administrative assistant.
The treasurer can, a town clerk can appoint an assistant or two.
Yeah.
And a treasurer can appoint. And a.
An assistant.
But since the treasurer is an appointed person per our vote, the select board appoints the assistant.
Right, okay.
Not the treasurer.
Right, right, okay.
So.
So.
Where's different before.
But I guess my thought was when we were talking about combining them, do you still have? X percent of the entire role as assistant treasurer and the other remaining percentage as administrative assistant? Because technically there's a need for that title in the town?
I'm not.
I mean, if the treasurer gets sick, but must there be, regardless of who appoints them? Is there a need to have an assistant, so-called assistant treasurer on staff? Does checks, doesn't need to be the title?
Doesn't need to.
You do a slow portion.
Or should we just confirm that somewhere?
Checks, like we have David Jones is considered an assistant treasurer for the town of Brooklyn. As well as Judy Acempora. As an assistant character, however, she did not been given check signing. I do not have check signing ability.
Okay.
I can't sign our own checks.
Alright.
So we're at.
We're gonna have to revisit it, we, we know.
You want me to hold off on that? Okay, we'll hold off on the assistant treasurer. Select board clerk, we're gonna hold off on that as well. Oh, no, select board clerk.
We have a value.
Right. Um, I'm, right now, um, the select work clerk is budgeted at eighteen hundred dollars a year. I would like to see that budget be at two thousand dollars a year because we are asking the clerk to do additional meetings. Besides just select board meetings. A clerk has been, a recorded clerk has been very good at doing. Hazard mitigation meetings, then this and that and the other. So I would like to have money in there for those extra meetings. That, that the rest of them doing. I'm not changing the pricing, I'm changing the number of.
How do we feel about the additional effort for hazard mitigation and such?
It's, it's, it's okay. I owe you, um, the minutes from, they haven't finished them yet, from the November eighth.
Yeah.
Meeting that we have here, uh, last Wednesday.
Right. But I guess my, my question is, I know how long they take to do. You might do really fast, I don't know, but it is just two hundred dollars. Sufficient, and it could be looking at eight or ten more meetings, which is at least a minimum of, uh, you know. Seventeen hundred dollars as opposed to two hundred dollars. So I think we need to be there.
Looking at increasing the rate, would you like to increase the rate? I don't know, we all should do that. I'm sorry? Uh, you shouldn't do that. It's unit priced it right.
Or she didn't pay by the hour?
She gets set, the, the, a recording card gets paid seventy-five dollars per meeting.
Okay.
And for twelve meetings, it's one thousand eight hundred dollars budgeted.
Well, it just work.
If, if I suggesting that we put in some more money for additional meetings. I thought two hundred, but if you wanna say five hundred, if you wanna say seventy-five times. And another seven hundred and fifty in the budget for additional meeting coverage. I don't. I don't, but.
Well, it's seven hundred dollars a meeting, why don't we at least make it either a hundred fifty more or. Yeah, two hundred and twenty-five more, you know.
Well, it was, we've only.
Yeah, it's sense.
It's all by seventy-five.
Yeah.
July, August, September, October, we're now into the fifth month of the year.
Right.
And I know definitely we had two more than we normally would have.
If we had special meetings, which we haven't been having, so, let, let's.
I would say five.
Alright.
Five times the hundred, the seventy-five, which is three hundred fifty dollars. So increase it to. To, yeah, twenty-two fifty or something like that.
What, what, what did you say, seventy-five? Think about the twenty.
Well, three hundred dollars, that's twenty-one, three fifty. Twenty-one fifty.
One thousand eight hundred dollars is twenty-one seventy-five.
Okay, twenty-one seventy-five. Tell him, tell him.
Okay.
Okay, then we had the stipend position, we're leaving that alone, assistant town clerk, records restoration. I guess that's not being done anymore. It's down to zero. So I think that, that's, we don't have to worry about that. Next one is a stipend position, we're skipping.
That's not being done anymore?
There's nothing budgeted for it and nothing was actually paid.
I'm not sure what that, what that entails.
When Gwen was photocopying ledger pages.
Okay, yes. Yeah, I always questioned that in the first place.
I think Samara might have actually moved that into another category. Because Samara was concerned that it was being misrepresented in the budget, that it comes from another fund. So I think having the zero there was something that Samara had reviewed and then had talked to them about. So I'm comfortable with keeping that at zero, but we can always, we'll go over that.
Mm-hmm.
With her, road commissioners and stipends, and these stipends we, you know, leave alone at this time, payroll taxes.
Well, is Archie really doing anything with your?
Oh, that's an appointment. That's not the position, so we're talking about.
To answer your question, yes, he does. We don't see it a lot, but I know that Mark depends on him a lot. For background information and estimates, basically. And if there's something that is weird that's come at us, I know you've had the luxury, the benefit of sitting down and talking with Archie about it. And getting his opinion on it. So the consultation fee, if that's what it is, is certainly worth the money.
It's cheap.
Probably cheap.
He, uh, he, what he does for living, knowing good training with the job table.
Yeah.
Cheap money for sixty years of experience, or his family back in the business.
Okay, but we're not talking about the appointment of a person, we're talking about the position.
Yeah, we know that, and I'm not talking about replacing anybody, I'm just talking about, you know, is it needed? Does he do anything? The answer is yes.
Yeah, the position is, it's an important stipend.
Okay.
Uh, now the stipend is building commissioner, payroll taxes, that would have to be, uh, calculated by the final result. Uh, once we have determined payroll amounts. So we can't answer that. What is, it's Vermont S U T A expense?
Unemployment tax?
Would that remain the same?
That probably would increase, it's, I'm sure, a percentage of the, the salary.
Well, except, the actual is minus twenty two dollars. Who came up with?
I'd say there's an error there, wouldn't you?
What's that?
I'd say there's probably an error there.
I know Samara had to straighten out some paperwork.
When I was talking with her today, we came up with five hundred dollars for that.
Oh, yeah, okay.
To add five hundred dollars to it?
No.
Just simply.
Instead of fifteen hundred, it's five hundred.
Oh, okay.
She said that, she seemed to think that was one place where we could cut.
To change the fifteen hundred to five hundred? Okay. Payroll service fee is also something we really don't have much control over, again. The actual amount spent was two thousand fifty five, uh, this year we budgeted one thousand seven hundred. I think we should probably budget two thousand for it.
Wait a minute, in, in, in twenty twenty three, was that four thousand ninety nine dollars?
No, no, it's two thousand fifty five.
Oh, oh, I ran a wrong column, okay. So, excuse me.
So we want to.
Okay.
Payroll service fee, um. Was actual. Two thousand fifty five dollars.
Sorry.
That we held for this current year that we're in now, we budgeted seventeen hundred. I would like to see us budget two thousand for it, so that we're not short of it.
I concur.
Supplies and postage. I think the supplies and postage should be increased, reduced, communicate a little bit more, I'd like to see it raised approximately another. Um. Well, we took off. We took, we took. I would like to see it go up in twelve hundred dollars, maybe twelve fif, I put your twelve, one thousand two hundred and fifty dollars for postage. And, and supplies, that's where.
Five thousand.
Computers and.
So you wanna see it go up to fifty two hundred?
Yes, let me clear this and add up. Thirty seven. Fifty. One, two, five, uh, five thousand dollars, that's what it was, I wanted it to go up to five thousand dollars. Because that's the account where the technology that I think this board's gonna need to start investing in is gonna. Need to come from, I think. I think we're gonna need to, we should buy another laptop. Uh, we, we should be buying some. Uh, we know, we know that this year we have to buy CPUs for the, uh. Listers that are not tax people, so, but that's from this year's budget, but I think. That we shouldn't have really reduced that, that's technology, supplies and clothes that's running the town, the town.
Town report.
The town report expense probably can remain the same, we, we're not really going to be adding a lot of pages to our town report this year. Uh, I think we need to, uh, budget for the planning commission because they are working on a new plan. Um, previously, it was a thousand dollars, and then it was budgeted down to zero because we weren't having plant, planning commission, but. Uh. Is this, it was one thousand dollars? Go back to a thousand dollars planning commission.
Well, we're probably gonna have to do some.
We have to do a new town plan.
Yes.
So, um, you know, we're doing surveys in mailings and, and, um. Printing reports and, and, um. If they have to hire any consultants now. Next one is abatements, uh. I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, I've got a line.
Abatements, that was at five hundred, that just covers, um, you know. People have, they owe three cents, they owe seventeen cents, and we. We pick up that, so we leave that at five hundred.
Yeah, somebody's house has a fire and their assessed value is less and they apply for an abatement. A five hundred dollars seems a rough guesstimate.
Uh, legal notices, I would like to see the legal notices increased by five hundred dollars. Because the newspaper is getting more and more expensive to put out our fees. Um, they are, it's usually a.
So you're talking fifteen hundred?
Fifteen hundred dollars for, for legal expenses, for legal notices.
I don't mean that paper, but the collector of delinquent taxes, I think, had a little more difficulty this year, which. Generally requires more effort and potential cost within a term.
Seminars, um.
Wow, four oh nine.
Um, go back, go to four hundred dollars, increase it by a hundred dollars and go to four hundred dollars. Because it seems that that, I know I go to seminars, stand you go, I mean, they're not that expensive, but. Still, if we go to five or six each, that's ten seminars, and if they're forty nine dollars a seminar, there's your four hundred ninety dollars.
Yeah, yeah.
Mileage and travel, I'd like that to be a hundred and fifty dollars, because again, um. When people put in for their mileage and. It's, it's gone up, the federal rate has gone up to almost sixty three cents a, uh. A mile. So bring that up to a hundred and fifty dollars for mileage. Town office electric. I think, looks like it's in the same range for the past. For twenty twenty three, we were within the range, so leave it at fifteen hundred.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, um, we did not budget anything for the electric at the meeting house, probably should be budgeted for, um. I don't think that the fundraising efforts to recovering electric bills in that building, I think those are basic. Costs that your town needs to absorb, so I would like to see the run sec, top of the second page.
Okay, can you just kick ten seconds about what you came up with the other ones?
Mileage track. Fifty dollars. Legal notices, uh, one thousand five hundred.
Okay.
Seminar to four hundred. A hundred and fifty dollars for mileage. One thousand five hundred for electric. The account.
And.
You wanna do, uh, three hundred or three twenty five or three fifty for the Brookline Meeting House electric?
Well, make it three twenty five.
Three twenty five?
I agree.
Okay, town office telephone. I don't know, now, I think the actual, the point was because we hired somebody to come in to buy the new phone system, and so. That was a, a extra bump, so I think the seventeen fifty should be sufficient for the basic telephone services. We're not going to, uh, have to, uh, match the twenty four eighty seven that was done before. Because, again, that was because we bought new phones. Seventeen fifty. Uh, town office fuel.
It's nine hundred and some odd dollars higher, huh?
It's going down. A little bit. It was going down.
Okay, the actual, for the few, it has not.
Actual is called thirty four seventy five. Thirty four last year. What you for twenty five?
Hmm.
That's a little long. If you were, but he bumped in here with that, reduce the.
Right.
That's hard to answer that. You'll never get an answer.
It depends.
This is a weird building, cause it's down, it's not even operating part.
Well, so, I mean, it looks to me like, I don't think that that's gonna go down.
So we do thirty five hundred?
Thirty five hundred, yeah.
Yeah. I like that number.
Computer services and maintenance, um. What was, that was, uh, three wire guy or two wire guy?
Eleven hundred thirty four dollars and ninety cents a year. For the contract. Which I'll get into later.
Right.
So this number is close, the twelve hundred dollars, that is.
Well, it's up, this last year was fifteen sixty eight.
Yeah, there may be more to that that we're not aware of, so I guess maybe we ought to investigate that.
Fifteen hundred dollars, maybe?
Yeah, we could, we could, if we don't spend it, we don't spend it.
Right, one thousand five hundred for computer services and maintenance. Fire alarm. Um.
It's like we're at five hundred, five fifty.
Looks like five hundred again, I don't know why we went down at one point, but.
Well, I would, it was five fifty one, right?
Yeah.
Well, I would go at least by fifty.
Five, five fifty?
Is that including Suzie's? Yes.
Yes.
And when, well.
Five hundred fifty?
Passed. It wasn't a part of that budget, was it? When, when we didn't have the.
Correct. So now we need to cover it, so five hundred fifty, I think you're right, it's fall, that's, that's a good.
Right.
Right. Legal services, we haven't used really legal services, do we wanna, uh. Leave it at three thousand? Keep, keep your fingers crossed.
Well, actual hundred, go down to two thousand, maybe?
I don't know, I would go down.
We wouldn't go down.
It's, it's about maybe ten hours worth of work. Three thousand dollars, and, and if we have a problem, it's gonna be at least.
Well, we're gonna have to check everything, comply to the total, too.
Yeah.
I'm checking out the total budget.
Right.
Uh, what I.
So we'll do it at three?
Go to ten B?
Uh, rescue services are, 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 uh. Pretty standardized, I think, uh, the fifteen. I think the sixteen, I think we should put sixteen thousand dollars in there.
We were talking about this this afternoon, it's a rescue, fire, and fire department. They're, they're gonna send us a bill.
Yes, but they're, 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 they're level funding us, uh, for this coming year. I believe the letter I got earlier was that they were planning on doing a level funding. Uh, and not increasing costs at this time.
Okay, so then we just put sixteen hundred?
I would put sixteen, sixteen thousand dollars, and again, if, if we get something between now and, and our, our finalization, we can change that. Uh, the nine thousand dollars is a set amount, again, with the fire department services from Newbrook, that's pretty sta, that's, that's. Should be remaining the same at this time.
They should come in bagged.
So ten seven twenty nine, or ten ninety three?
The next one is tens. Ten thousand, next one is mutual aid, mutual aid is, uh, from. That coordinates the E, EMS and all that.
Call me first.
So, uh, looks like eleven hundred dollars for that.
Eleven thousand.
Eleven thousand dollars, excuse me. Budget eleven thousand.
Yeah, the zeros can get confusing.
Yeah.
Sure can.
The copier contract, um. Looks like twelve, a one thousand, twelve hundred dollars. I hope you don't mind, I'm not doing that.
That's alright, yeah.
Ten dollars here, ten dollars there.
I know, I agree.
Yeah. Uh, town property maintenance. Uh, we did have to go up because of the additional maintenance, I would leave that the same, maybe forty.
Forty six?
Maybe, naturally.
Well, we're only.
We budgeted.
Four thousand six hundred and fifty dollars this year for, uh, town property maintenance. And that includes, does that include the cemeteries? I don't know if they combined that or not, that might include. Two thousand for that, town property maintenance. Four, forty five hundred, forty seven, four thousand seven hundred, what, what do you wanna do for the, uh. Town property maintenance.
I wanna wing all this and then we'll.
I'd rather work for fifty dollars myself, just to stay, to go up to the even said forty seven hundred.
Forty seven.
Yeah. Prices are not going down.
But I'd certainly honor whatever any else wants to.
Town trash removal, that is a, uh, helps when we're doing some pickup and that, so I would leave that at. That might even be able to go down, that we can go down. For that, two fifty.
Two fifty.
Alright.
Now that we have the truck.
Now that we have a truck. V L C T dues, we got those dues, I have them here. The V S is. One thousand one hundred and thirty dollars.
Really? What? That's a lot less.
Well, I have, I have eighteen hundred and sixty four dollars.
I have, let's just say you, you.
This is what I printed out.
Why was the actual in twenty twenty three zero? That's a good question.
Alright, say it again.
Does that mean it went to, it came, came out of a different font, or what, what does that mean?
I have no idea.
I don't know.
But this is their dues chart with each town's name and the dollar amount that came through an email last week. With eighteen sixty four.
Right, is that what I said to eight? I have one.
It was less than.
Anticipation for Evans to build trick budgets, V L C T, am I looking at the right one? Publish a listing of the membership dues at a dollar thirty six per capita. So the municipality service fee is one thousand one hundred and thirty dollars.
Yeah, seven hundred dollars and thirty, seven hundred and thirty four dollars less.
Ten three.
Yeah, hers is.
Yeah, yeah.
So you, you got yours?
Well, the one that they sent through, it says a dollar thirty six per capita on the twenty twenty population.
Right.
And, and, but when they actually print it out down here, I haven't, I didn't bother to see it, that number is a dollar. Thirty six times five hundred and fifty nine, but.
This is October twenty seventh, and some guy. That after a modest increase in our dues for fiscal year twenty four, four percent. V L C T dues are increasing aggregate of only three percent in fiscal year twenty five. This is not a bill, please do not send your dues in now, we will bill you in June of twenty twenty four.
What's this meaning?
Receive a separate invoice for one thousand one hundred thirty dollars. For all.
Hmm. I don't know, I guess it means, I wonder why they did then turn around and do this. Well, it's saying eleven thirty. Not the time, uh, eleven hundred and thirty dollars.
Right?
Yeah, hey.
Well, let's.
Send writing.
Eleven thirty?
Eleven thirty.
Wow.
Yeah. Well, thank you for providing that.
Uh, when the regional dues, we don't have a number for that yet. You, have you gotten any?
I have a question. Maybe I went too far here. Let me see. I got what I'm saying, I think I'm something else.
Okay. When the regional commission?
There's been discussion about it, there was a budget created previously, I would say. In early to midsummer. And we talked about it, I'd have to go back and get my notes.
Yeah, I don't have it here, so you wanna leave it open?
Look it up, yeah.
Okay, leave it open. Nemrick license and support. Sixty three hundred dollars, are we staying with Nemrick? We're staying with Nemrick.
Yes, yes.
We visited that, we haven't heard anything different.
I would.
Well, I talked with her, what, two, three weeks ago, and she said that we would, it appeared would be, I know there was discussion about changing. But there were reasons to stay with us, which she would rather we do. So the number isn't gonna change much.
Only sixty three in there, again, is not the stone, if we need to modify this, we.
I, I would suggest to revisit this whole list.
Oh, oh, yeah, yeah, good idea.
Review it ourselves and go back and.
Right.
Bet each other for each other.
Landfill fees, I don't have any idea of that.
That's what I was thinking about.
Okay.
That's what I was thinking on top. Is that the landfill fees for?[1709.48]
Hazard mitigations. But that's the cost for the town of Brookline. In order to keep. They collect hazardous waste. You know, paint and things like televisions and that. And, and so that's the cost for the town of Brookline.
Okay.
For that.
What I was saying to an uncle, that's, this is applicable. Is when they were closing the dump. We were on the line for six, seven thousand dollars. When we, when they stopped picking up the, the, the collections. In the towns. And we had to pay down over a period of time. I guess that's about it.
I don't remember when they closed the dump.
Been a while.
The dump is open. Bravo, what's up?
Yeah, I'm talking about stopped and picking up the. They stopped picking up the uh containers. Right. Okay, sorry, let's move on.
This is not recycling. This is the Rattler, Camden County Solid Waste Management District. These. Brookline.
They're sure they get it.
Because they have to offer to Brookline and uh the collection of hazardous waste.
Thirty-eight hundred, is that what you're saying? So we're going down to thirty-four.
They send the bill or?
Yes.
So, so we don't know what that is here.
No, but it looks like it's been thirty-three, I would, thirty-three. I don't know, when it, why we charge when it's a thirty-eight? You wanna leave it at thirty-eight? We can modify it another time.
Why, why was to call Dan Towler to see if they've talked about it, any meetings he's gone to since he's our rep? Or he could call and ask and we could find out that.
Okay. Yeah, that's just with Dan. I, I put thirty-eight hundred in there, but we can, again, modify that. Law enforcement, that is usually, I have one here, we just do a set of hours.
Well, it's, well, it's getting more expensive. I bet they're flying around in society and they're probably cheaper now.
I saw the police coming to town. I was.
Crime was being committed. That's the only reason.
He was coming slow. He was in a rush.
Yeah.
He's looking for pothead, just probably playing that or.
Alright, so yeah, their hours. Dollars an hour and we usually rate the, usually try this, average of ten hours at the most. If we use it, we don't. We don't, we.
So that's six hundred and forty dollars. Okay.
Okay.
How, how, is that good a range? Cause I, um. I haven't seen any police.
We don't hire, but we don't, we don't have a contract.
So, but how, where's, where's the ten hours?
I had to get someone to serve papers. So, yeah, we have to get someone, we need to ask that they're not gonna come be in the US to a household or uh assistance.
And they, and they will come.
Yes.
Or if.
I was, I was. About regionalization, that's police, uh, the police system in the area. So I'll talk about that later on, under new business. Uh, that's just ten hours. Okay, um.
Remember what I said at town meeting, when we were talking about recycling collection? And we, we, we discussed in the budget, it was like twenty-two, twenty-three thousand dollar. And then it was as low as fifteen. And I said, at the time we split the difference and I got climbed on by the town.
No, it, it was um, it was for the one thousand five hundred and ninety dollars for the sevens that you said.
No, oh.
That's what you were saying. I know, I'm correct.
You're getting a lot of sleep lately, aren't you? That's right, it's for sevens.
Yes.
Okay, go ahead.
Alright, recycling collection. Um, I would leave it alone at eighteen. And maybe it went down a little bit, but we're not sure about the fluctuation. We have a new company that has come in, uh, Casella. And they, they've been maintaining things, so. Uh, unless we hear differently, so we leave it at eighteen thousand. Okay.
You have five minutes.
Okay. Insurance and bonds. What is insurance and bonds? Oh, just ins- well, insurance that we pay.
Yeah.
Okay. Um. Did, so it looked like eight, eighty-eight.
Eighty-five hundred.
Eight thousand, even if you're fifteen dollars was the actual, did you?
Well, she had a question is, is the V L C T dues was zero in twenty twenty-three. She was wondering if this was V L C T dues, about fifty-five hundred. Um, wow, wow.
Hmm, I don't think so. Well, only in a sense that it probably goes to passive, that's some kind of. Sub, the insurance division of V L C T, is that what they're called?
That is the insurance company, that's correct.
Okay, so I wonder.
You're saying, so the, the, the V L C T dues. And the insurance and bonds amount looks like it was combined for the actual.
That's what she was. She was wondering, she was quite clear.
How do we find that out?
Well, we need to ask Melissa or Judy. I mean, we now have a four-wheel excavator that's worth a hundred and seventy-two thousand. We've got a truck that's worth thirty-six, thirty-whatever.
Eight-four.
So I'm, and plus we have a mower and I found out, you know, that we're actually insured for about forty-one thousand dollars for. The leaf blower, the mower, stuff at the garage we wanted, the, the church, et- et cetera. So. Right. You know, we're looking at easily two hundred thousand dollars more wa- that we are getting covered. I'm wondering if that increase came from that aspect.
So it's something to ask.
So gotta ask, yeah.
Okay.
Sounds like that's gonna blow.
Yeah, I would think you're right.
Okay. Alright, old cemetery's lawn maintenance, it's uh two hundred, it's five hundred dollars per old cemetery that we maintain. So that stays at two thousand dollars.
Okay.
Right. Windham County tax.
Budget sixty-five hundred, actual twenty-eight hundred and we're speaking of thing with sixty-five.
Melissa had a story about that going back to, it looks like it's early summer. I don't remember what it was. But there was something that she thought there might have been a processing error, one sort of another.
Well.
Alright, we'll leave that open then, cause that's a big difference.
It is, yeah, yeah.
So leave it asked, I'll put asked on it. Alright, uh, okay, I also have a question here. Animal impound expenses.
Free, gotcha.
I don't understand. What this impound expense gives and what the seven hundred and seventy dollars is, I, I. They don't charge the town to take, we, we, we contract with them annually. But.
Okay.
It's not seven hundred and seventy dollars, it's like five hundred dollars. So none of, I have to ask this, I don't understand this. I had a question, I'm gonna read that one.
Yeah.
Yeah.
They just put a big addition on it. All in try hard too.
Okay, the next item here, fact TV broadcast fees. We are no longer having to pay that.
That'd be zero.
That should be zero.
That should be zero. Question is. Actually putting it on the. Fact TV, on TV, does it come up?
No, so it's not like. Going to YouTube.
Schedule and says on Tuesday, you turn to this channel and you can watch the show that was taken. Used to be too, because Howard will call me and say, hey, you're on TV right now, turn to channel three and. They, they don't do it anymore. Right, fact TV?
I don't think they're listening.
Alright, so we'll put that to zero.
Okay.
Yeah, that, that, that involved with them sending somebody over here to handle the camera like.
Um, guy or the pain guy and then.
Have no idea how that worked out, but.
So zero.
Yeah.
Fire permits and other miscellaneous, I guess we'll leave it at fifty, cause it's a miscellaneous. Miscellaneous bank fees, um, not sure. What the deal is with miscellaneous bank fees.
Why, well, we were questioning why, why that was so high. I mean, have, have we changed that?
No.
Banks change on us.
Well, like, that's probably what happened. And you have to recall, we had a wire transfer that we did with Alta, which there's a fee for that. We've done it, so we wouldn't have to go over and pay mileage and somebody to be, a, you know, for hours or whatever. That was supposed to be a, 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 you know, a, a savings, but. So I'm, I'm, I'm just taking a guess that, that, what else could have changed? And I think I saw that something come through that the, the company that is handling that for us, X, X something or other exchange or whatever it's called. Uh, increased the fee sometime in the last three months. So, I'm sure that's not the full dollar, but again, something we need to ask Melissa, I guess.
Alright, I'll put asked.
So we're leaving it blank.
Yeah.
For the moment.
Okay, the rest of these are, are appropriations, appropriation, appropriation. I, I have a file, do you want me to pull the? Pull that together. So we're gonna leave the appropriation.
They want fifty, they want three hundred or whatever, or we can say, no, 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 we don't have to go.
Alright, uh, okay, nevermind. So that covers, that covers what we need to do that we said we were going to do tonight, revenue section.
So when we come back next time, we're gonna re-review the appro- uh, the revenues again.
Right.
This is the expense portion.
Yeah, we didn't even look at it.
We didn't do, we didn't do revenues, we just did expenses.
I read this, total revenues.
Alright, so we are. Going with the budget.
On our way.
Agenda. Um, I also put on here things like articles, we don't need to do it tonight because we're running a little late. Appropriation request, we'll do on December sixth. Um, Bruce, do you have an idea of what the school budget needs to be for the covering the um, uh, school bill? The daycare building, I suppose. The daycare.
That's typical. When I looked at the cost. A little while back, it was like seven or eight thousand dollars, but that is really hard to guess. Um, because. It depends on what you call. Okay.
Well, what, do you think we should put eight thousand dollars down? Do you think we should put ten thousand dollars? They have to get fifty percent of what they rented. What is the maintenance?
Maybe that's more. More, more like it, about ten grand. Because you, you're including, are you including the fire alarms? Are you including the waters?
Insurance.
Insurance, almost like two thousand dollars like that.
Heat pump maintenance, filter, glass, bowl, plumbing concerns, replacing.
It's all, it's all the maintenance stuff, it's all the stuff that I call in, have them do that costs money. Like when, 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 when that stuck, you know, that kind of crap, that's where, where, where it winds up. Fortunately, it's been minimized over the last two years because we don't have a water issue anymore. That's the result. We don't have a heat issue.
Saying about ten, ten K?
Yeah, I think so. And, and it's an educated guess, this is about the best I can do without sitting down.
Ten, ten thousand?
Yeah, that's what I'd be sitting down and figuring out everything. And I wouldn't. You wouldn't. Are you? So you're not including in that, in that budget, the fire alarms. And the water test, maybe the water test, but the fire alarms are included in on the, on the other, other expense side.
Oh, alright, well, okay.
Well, it's like three, four, five million dollars a year for that. Now, leave it at ten, I, I. The, I've always said the best way to handle this is I look at the previous expenses. When, when the treasurer, punching through our list of the last year, you can see it right there. Be cautious.
That's all I'm gonna do is a guess. Okay.
And go off for a.
Alright, uh, our program, I don't think we're gonna be discussing that at this time, but do realize that we do need to. Um, uh, by, uh, I think it was March, we have to set where we're gonna spend our monies from designated and then spend it by twenty twenty-four. Uh, twenty twenty-six. Alright, so we're gonna move on to warrant orders.
I think there's an interim report in March, but by the end of the year of. Twenty twenty-four.
Yes.
We have to report what we're committing the money to.
We have forty-seven thousand dollars left. So we need to just. We go and deal with it. Right.
Right.
Not actually forty, but.
And realize that. Going on the town warning is the request from the East New Haven Fire Department for ten thousand dollars of ARPA money. That we, they requested that earlier this year, and Debbie put it on the, you know, they.
Coming out of other one?
That was the request, new paying a hundred thousand. Would come out of taxes, but they requested it from ARPA. So we'll have to discuss how to handle that. Unfortunately, uh, the payroll, you, uh, I would be making at this time a motion to concur with my actions of signing. Payroll warrant X, Y, Z in the amount of X number of dollars. But they did not. Send a copy of it to our email, so I didn't have something to print out. I did come in and sign it. But it's nowhere to be found, so I cannot have it recorded. So we're gonna have to leave that open for the next meeting.
Okay.
Judy's gotta remember to leave it. She files it away and I don't know where it's.
You're gonna pay them.
It's already been paid, this is the day, ten days ago. Alright, I am going to make a motion to approve. A tax payable warrant. Twenty-four twenty dated November fifteenth, twenty twenty-three. In the amount. Of. Twelve thousand, one hundred sixty-four dollars and twenty-eight cents. May I have a second?
Second.
Second, if I stand. Any discussion?
Absolutely.
Bruce.
Okay. First of all. You have a thirteen hundred dollar bill.
It's not in his path, it's not.
Oh, it's not?
No.
That's weird, it's been over. I bet you said that, you said the.
A hundred and twenty-five dollars from Coda and Coda for work done at the Brookline Meeting House. That's with the bills, that's what I.
I, 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 we talked about that, that started moving. I have to call Jamie, there was nothing ever done. That he was sent home.
Here it is. Hang on.
He was sent home and uh.
Coda and Coda. On.
Want a copy?
It is a statement dated the thirty-first of October. It is to Coda and Coda. The transaction date was ten twenty twenty-three. Reference number was six oh seven, nine, six, seven. Plumbing labor. A hundred and twenty-five dollars. Payment due, a hundred and twenty-five dollars.
Okay, oh, oh, I, I always put that to slide.
So are we going to approve, not approve this?
Well, I'm trying to say something. I called today to come over and do that. They supposedly had done. So I don't know how you wanna handle that. Pay the bill and then just get them to. Do the job. I just talked to Jamie, but.
Somebody did it.
They came and went home.
So they charged this for coming and going home then?
I don't know. I'll have to ask, ask Coda, Coda. They came, I even said this is the last meeting. When they said they were gonna call me and come there and meet me and they, I called me first and they never did that. They just came on their own.
So then they charged this for coming.
Okay.
So then we're gonna pay it. I don't know what you're trying to, I don't know, you wanna amend this amount or not?
Well, we have to come anyway, so maybe we should just pay it and again, the credit amount if, if they find it as a, as a discrepancy. Would you wanna do that one? I don't have an issue with Coda and Coda. There's something going on here, I don't know exactly what happened. The only thing I do know. I was told he was sent home. He stopped and split. Now, whether, whether we're charged just for stopping. Who knows, people are charging any way they want nowadays.
Brookline Meeting House Plumbing.
Do it.
Well, we gotta suggest that we simply adjust or amend it. Item by the dollar amount, and you look into it.
I will, I got the numbers up there, I'll call them.
Okay.
I want you to know what.
So we're still in discussion, so that, so any other discussion?
If you give me all.
So we're looking at amending this, reducing this by a hundred and twenty-five dollars.
Giving all the references.
I'll make you, I'll give you the. Alright.
Thank you.
Hang on, let me clear this and do my official one. Two, one, six, and four. Point two eight minus one twenty-five. Okay, the amended amount is twelve thousand, thirty-nine dollars and twenty-eight cents. So I will repeat my amended motion to approve accounts payable in the amended amount of. Twelve thousand, thirty-nine dollars and twenty-eight cents. Due to the reduction of a hundred and twenty-five dollars holding out a bill from Coda and Coda for the plumbing at Brookline Meeting House. May I have this? I'm ready back for second. All those in favor of the amended amount of twelve thousand, thirty-nine dollars and twenty-eight cents signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. And you oppose? And the sentence? Okay, I'll let you sign that. I'm gonna make a copy of this one, they're signing it, if you don't mind. What is this? Went to the job, customer will call to do job at a different time, one hour. So they did. Went to the job. Customer will call to do job at a different time, one hour. So they did.
Went to the job.
I'm gonna get top of that. But it looks like they, uh.
Suck it specifically. I'll tell you guys. You know what I did today? I looked on their website to see if there was an email contact. So like the email, I said, Jamie, I sent you an email. Not there, but I haven't asked her yet, but it's kind of. I didn't have any of this problem. I had twenty two visits from Coda and Coda, from twenty one to twenty two. Never had a little bit of problem. They, they're billing issues. We've, we've got, we got door issues. I understand, but everything got itself ironed out. None, none, none of this crap. This doesn't happen before.
Was that because you emailed the service person directly?
No, no.
It still went through the same system. How did you send her mails then?
I did. I'll Jamaica. Jamaica is a, has, Coda and Coda has a plumbing department. It's not, as you like that. So he knows, she knows his lives. The plumbing department makes, supposed to call me, and then for the need, latest one did. I'm not used to. Not yet. I tell them to do something, do something different, that they might can do it like that. Next step, you have their chance. Is this the plumbing bill? That's what I'm looking for. It's not there. I know. It's me talking about that something else.
No, you're talking about the thirteen hundred bucks right there. That's a different.
All right. So we did accounts payable, payroll, and explain that reports. Okay, let's move down the line. Highly supervisor, Mr. Bills.
So the neighbors came to down, came to button out. I had some work footholds, uh, measured out for the dirt and didn't seem to get to all of them, and that's because of the way they do their footholds. Uh, if they're, they're foothold site, they're designed to grind the whole section of roads, therefore it took more materials than the footholds. But that's why they didn't all get done. But on that note, I went over to see Jay Wilson at New Haven. He gave me a bag of cold patch that they use, and they've had good luck with. So it's not enough to do all their footholds, but I'm gonna experiment with it plus what we have. And he said they lay theirs on the floor, and they're DVD floors, and it makes it pliable. And we don't have that feature yet, but I'm going to, uh, he brings them home and put it by a wood stove and give it, so, you know, I'm hoping for Friday, you know. How it's supposed to have a big one.
I've seen the Brattleboro Road crew with a twenty gallon, uh, gas under, like you use for a propane cooker.
Yeah.
Grill.
Yep.
And they have a pliable hose coming out of it and a metal rod, and then the end of the metal rod, there's this enlarged circular thing.
Yep.
And they, they heat the hole where the patch is going first, and then they apply the, is that, is that something you're wearing?
Jay talked about that.
Uh huh.
He says, uh, you know, if it's a cold day, that's a good way to apply. Ah. And he said the, the material that they use, the minute you open the bag, it almost pours it out. It's, it's so loose. And then, then it can be bad if they look for them back.
Ah.
But, um, you know what? I've got the one major hole at bottom of what you know, it's probably gonna take, uh, several bags. You know, I'm gonna dig it down deep enough so that it's not, it's the thin wire on that use, that'll be thick enough and hopefully bagged together. So that's one of my plans for Friday. Um, then we talked about trees, uh, I mean, business retreats for an R S P coming December. I met with a colleague, Bradon, from Wyndham Regional, talked about grants and use the email and information. We're gonna have to talk all that over to decide what's the best usable way to do uh, grants or email repairs. Uh, I've been working a little bit, the school, daycare, uh, general maintenance, uh, you know, Lucy talked about new handrails. We're, so they know the air filters and the new heat pump. Since now, slag works on the ground. I had something more to try to find things to cut and pull in some great finds down. I've been doing some equipment maintenance. And then funny is putting in a down yard. Um, been doing some building maintenance at the town regard. Uh, we had three, six holes in the roofing. There's, uh, in the roof, it's an open feeling up to the roofing and the, the fire blast section that still allow daylight through the roofing. And not all of them, but there's, uh, I think eight streets that are allowed sunlight in there in the squirrel, they chew the ridges off and come in hungry days. I noticed the rain coming down, so I brought me some stuff that WW and climbed up and patched the, the loop. Also, uh, self-danchet. They placed the broken boards. The body was all same can. The lighting, the gradership, uh, was, there was four major lighting sections, which is the minimum that was required by D L P C. And, uh, the bulbs are three hundred watt, uh, that gets for rest of the bulb point. And they take a lot of energy, but they know how to make those bulbs. So the WW, uh, gets new receptacles. Took down the three hundred watt lighting that's put in four places and replaced them with LED floodlights. Whenever they have better lighting, then it should give a few, some of the rest of the buildings, uh, LED floodlight. They're gonna be a whole, but they only use like fifteen. We had one meeting this week there with FEMA day board, but they're gonna sign photos, the two thousand and one. Recycled bin. Uh, so we usually call in, it's an on-call thing, uh, to come in either exchange or sometimes they pick them up and go in with it. And since we've got the new company coming, uh, I usually try to call like when I see it getting almost full. And for a while, they would come, you know, one to two days after my call. Lately, it's been forty after my call. And this week on Monday, I called and said, did you hear Wednesday? And they're still not.
Not here yet.
And it was one of those bins that it's short.
The junky ones.
Didn't think too much. So, uh, you know, this came up earlier in the year, but should I inquire on a like, uh, the exchange, a weekly exchange, not, so it comes on the same day of the week? And it seems like it takes seven days roughly to, uh, for it to fill up. But it's taking more than that to get it exchanged. Should I inquire?
These are the same people you're dealing with, Robert?
Well, see, uh, triple P trucking was sold out, so. I have called in, in the center meeting, it served us the next day. It feels like a lot of times they're forty, three to four days old. So I don't know whether, probably when it's half full in hopes that they don't dump the next.
Oh, yeah.
Maybe you should hook that up with the dispatcher from there and see what they say.
Well, that's where I wanted to.
I, I'm talking to this, yeah, I'll call them up and say, look, uh, if you're, what's your in the future, are you going to do your steward exchange within twenty four, forty eight hours? Or should we, we, yeah, ask them? It's, it's, you could call ahead of time.
It's cool.
Yeah.
I mean, it seems like it's getting this year. I don't know. We're getting more people from out of town or more people staying here from out of town and then but it just seems like they're doing up.
And this was a smaller meeting. I would talk, I would talk to them and, and use your best judgment in making that decision on, on how frequent we could set up. If you feel that come every Tuesday is what you wanna do, then tell them that. But I don't know.
Cause for a while.
The weekend, the people, you know, I thought, like, like Monday, Tuesday.
Usually comes out March, Fridayish.
For a while, you know, when it was slow, you could, uh, save by not doing it weekly, but it was a week and a half. Yeah. Fill up, but now it seems like it's overflowing. And then once it's almost full, it's another quarter.
I'm gonna leave that decision up to you.
All right.
You can, we'll cover the costs.
Okay. Well, it's just something, you know, if we do that, it might increase the budget.
Yeah. Thank you for asking.
Yeah, ask the guy and say, look, otherwise we have, have a different system. Just.
Okay.
Tell us, I'd make outs.
Uh, actually, back to the town bridge there, there was a glowing light outside. It's one of those when I actually drive in in the middle of the night, the loading salt stand, um, it wasn't working proper. It turned out the, the switch itself was bad, so I went back, got a switch with that in. Readjusted the weights, um, and that's it. I, my, um.
Mark?
Yes.
Were you able to finish this roof that was cast on last year?
I haven't done it yet. I've, I've waited for the good days and I.
We only got like three left.
Yeah, I know. It, it may not happen just because of everything else, but, uh, if I can fit it in, I'll definitely, I've, I've got paint, I got a road. I had a couple of situations where it was planned for the day and then the plan's got changed, so if I can get a warm day, it's, it's in the works. Yep.
All right, that's very fine.
Yep.
Just a little go.
Um. Okay. I finally filed the grant made, uh, package today with, uh, V-Trans. The total of the expenses was, uh, nine thousand, two hundred and fifty nine dollars and sixty eight cents. Twenty percent of that is the town's responsibility, eighteen fifty one ninety. So we will get a check probably in three weeks, assuming that they don't ask for anything more of about seven thousand, four hundred and seven dollars and eighty cents.
Excellent.
Yep.
And that was the Kirsch Road project?
That was the Kirsch and Hill Road combined.
Yeah.
Gotcha. Yep.
Yeah.
Um. You, with last meeting, had asked that, uh, when we looked at the, uh, insurance value of the property, brought up the issue of there being perhaps, uh, coverage for some of the personal property, the appliances in the meeting house, and some of the tools, chainsaws, et cetera, that are in the town garage. I did follow up, maybe it was the meeting before even, with Judy, and she said that, uh, all of that is covered. Uh, essentially, the town has a, uh, coverage amount of forty one thousand dollars to cover such things as the mower, leaf blower, the personal things in the church, and the personal things at the town garage. So that would seem to be adequate, I would think, unless somebody feels differently about that. I'll just assume that, uh, we're okay on that.
I'm gonna ask you to take a look at this. This was a DocuSign insurance thing that I couldn't open, and Melissa was having a hard time, so Melissa was able to open it, and then she sent it to me today. And it's, it's, uh, uninsured liability. And I was like, well.
Judy had emailed us something about this going back probably about a month.
Month or so.
And there was a difference between what we were insuring and apparently what other towns are insuring. So, uh, they don't even have a policy number in this.
No, it's not.
Oh.
So.
What would you like me to do? Look into it or?
No, with it myself.
All right.
I'm like, I mean, I'm the one that can sign it, and I'm not signing a blank document, so.
Right.
I, I'm gonna, I'm, I'm gonna give it back and I'll see if I can ask Melissa what really.
She is aware that up in the upper right-hand corner of those kinds of documents, there's a little square to check, and then that makes it active for the, for the ability to put data in. Now, if it's left blank, we probably have a system that hasn't carried over the number, which would have to come off another document for us to enter it in. That just just look in between the lines on that.
Okay.
Uh, so, uh, the other thing that came up last meeting is that we had a contract that was signed by uh, Two Wired Guys, uh, Joyce Mill, I believe.
Mm-hmm.
But there were no dollar amount in the contract, nor any services that were provided for the contract. So I was asked to look into that. And at the time, I think a select board member offered that we get a contract from Two Wired Guys or some document. And, and Judy, I asked Judy about that. She says, we do not get anything from Two Wired Guys. What has been the case is that the town has sent the same kind of contract that we were asked to execute, which was basically no data, other than the town name, the Two Wired Guys name, and that it was an annual deal, arrangement, and, and apparently that's been it. So I logged on to the Two Wired Guys website. I looked at what their membership, we, uh, generally provides for a service. It doesn't state any of that. It states that an individual's fee is a hundred and eighty seven dollars uh, for that service. Uh, the fee that has been charged the last two consecutive years is eleven hundred, thirty four dollars and ninety five cents for the past two years by Two Wired Guys. So I've emailed them just this morning, asking if the fee is going to be the same this year, and if they could elaborate on just what's included in that, uh, service package, so that we could do some kind of tentative planning on
Right.
how that fits in with what we wanna do. Uh, and I also spent a significant amount of time over the last day and a half researching uh, a question that, uh, the Patrick Donlin for FEMA sixty four twenty one regarding the two unfinished projects. And in the course of going in and out of the, the portal for FEMA, I noticed that they had a certain number of our jobs for, uh, that twenty twenty one flood, ninety percent complete.
Ninety.
You know, X percent complete. So I went and found the project number, the damage number, the location, the type of issue to be completed, and went through the entire, presented a, a summary, but all of these have been completed, citing all fourteen basic locations, so that he knows they're complete. And, and they needed something like that in order for them to basically commit to paying the money that we're gonna be asking reimbursement for on the report that Samara and, uh, Melissa have been working so hard on.
Right.
Uh, Samara sent a summary, uh, I think it was this morning, maybe, or last night. Fantastic. She and Melissa got a really good handle on it, it sounds like. And I felt really comfortable. They've obviously put in a lot of time and effort, and I personally, I'm sure like everyone in here appreciates that. Yeah. When we were going through, uh, photos of the twenty twenty one scenario, Mark and I, yesterday, we came across two that were labeled Culvert three and Culvert four.
Yeah.
And didn't seem to ring any visual recollection on Mark's part of them being Culverts three and Culvert four. And I wanted to be able to, when I wrote that letter to Mr. Donlin today, actually have gone over and looked at then it rode. I went up to where it appears you started, Culvert thirteen and fourteen. I looked at where the, the gr, the gra, the gravel composition of the surface, saw where it stopped, and it just happens to be a wooden stake with a flag on it right near the house, the driveway of that party that you mentioned.
Yeah.
I forget what their last name is, but.
Bolster.
Bolster. And I measured back to where you told me to stop. But I'm looking and I'm saying, you know, there's a lot of, a gravel that's been put over here to slope it down off of the hill that goes up to Holland Hill Road to leave, and that was of the same gravel composition as the rest of that road. So I, I measured up to. So I I measured up to the top of that little hill that goes up to to Holland Hill. It's about nine hundred, nine hundred feet, about what they were looking, eight fifty, nine hundred, depending on where you wanna stop. So it looked to me, and I said it in my letter this morning, we're having looked at it. That it appears that the amount that was stated in their bid at least has covered, been applied to the road, whatever that was. Because yeah, I, you know, I, that's what it looks like. Uh and and I and I felt comfortable having seen it and walked it and measured it, that that's what it was to been. Regardless of what we thought we did or whatever. So so I told them that's finished. And I just reminded them that we did not put in for uh one, two and one, three of Bennett Road. For Purple Mountain Bennett Road, there was a one, 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 two, one, three. Well, I think one and one and one, two was the culverts. Uh and one, three was um the wing walls, I believe. That they wanted eight feet wide, ten, five feet high and ten, ten inches thick. I told them we did not do that. So I specified it for them, so when I go back and look at their notes, they hopefully won't have any misunderstanding. It's in detailed format for them.
And do you believe that they were gonna use mitigation for the Holland Hill?
No, but they they had no display of it. They haven't changed it. However, when I did go in and look at comments that they had offered on it. Mr. Donlin said he had referred it to other people within FEMA to review and make a decision on it. So they haven't closed it out by saying no. Uh they've just said, we're entertaining it, we're looking at it. And I reminded him of that fact and the letter that I formally complained about that error back on the fifth of October. So hopefully we've covered it as much as we can cover it. It I guess in one sense, we're just in their hands, you know, gotta wait to see what they do. Okay. Uh I then looked at those culverts and took pictures of them that you and I were talking about. And I stopped at just this side west of Johnny Swing's house. The first culvert is already plugged up. There's no wa- there's no ability, very little ability for water to get into that culvert and go across the road. There's no water coming out. It's not been wet for a while. I don't know what needs to happen there. The next culvert down is a similar situation, but only half filled. There is slight trickle coming out the other end, but no, no water going through, so I don't know if it needs to be cleaned or or whatever.
Or either just below.
Yeah, it's you look at Johnny's house and you come this way west. The first one on the, that's one on each side. You get a wooden stick on the inlet side and no, nothing on the other side, but it's almost directly crossroad from it. Check that one, it's plugged. You go down like hundred feet, the next one is half plugged. And then the next two are um allowing water to go through and then there's the one that has the electrical wire. Somebody put up in the middle of it to run underneath the culvert.
Yeah.
Close the cross up. That those, that one and the one south of it or this west of it are okay. They're they're doing fine. Uh but I didn't find either any of those to resemble the photos. That we saw as three or four. They don't match. I don't know where those other two are from.
Four was the way down on the pages.
Ah.
By the tower line.
Well, huh. Okay, and then I've been helping kind of just as an info, Marjorie Ray a little bit. She wanted to know if there's uh anything that we could provide her for the minutes of the planning committee and or the energy committee. So the stuff that people, Samara principally has been putting into and sending out to everybody. I have it on my computer and I sent her copies of that. And she requested a brief paragraph on what's what's hazard mitigation committee do? What's the planning committee doing or gonna do and why? Uh so I promised her that somebody sometime by the end of the week I'll have that done. And then the only other thing I think that you might find of interest, because if he doesn't call, if I'm not contacted, you might be contacted, is Dan Shoner up on uh. Um up Athens Road, he i- is interested in contacting someone. Uh to see if there's something that can be done. Uh the light hour picture that I had sent him definitely shows a steep ravine. If you'd like, I can send it to you up the hill that directs all the water to that catch basin. It's down near the road. I mean, it's it's bigger, significantly bigger than the one that Tattersall people had. Uh and there's another one of a different kind. Next to the, up on the hill from that yellow house on the corner, Oliver Ames's house. Yeah, yeah, that's that's gonna be a problem forever. Hopefully the, what he's doing will catch all that water, but it's designed to go there. You know?
Yeah.
There's a big ravine going north, south up on the on the mountain. And then the middle of it, there's this open where all the water channels through. And you look at the lighter, it shows you the 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 water marks and the uh where it has flowed. And it all goes down into that field. It's amazing.
They they dug down. Uh in Houston.
It's getting late, but.
I'm sorry.
Yeah.
And so that water is filled that.
Yeah.
Okay.
So.
I'm sorry. So anyway.
It's okay, that's good. I I understand, but it it's.
Yep, yep. Got it. Thank you.
All right, uh Bruce?
I have nothing except for this bill that I didn't know who owns. Where did I have a question to have work, possibly have work done across the contact. Samantha, Sam, Samantha Bowe, that I hadn't, instead of Carrie emailing you back and saying, Bruce, you didn't contact him. He just went and ordered the work for thirteen hundred and seventy five dollars, thirty dollars fifty cents. Not suggestion.
Who ordered the work?
I don't know. I'm assuming it was Carrie.
Have you called them?
Nope, and I'm not going to.
Why not?
Because I'm gonna get in a fight room, that's why. He's a major reason why I left the church committee in the first place. I'm not gonna do it, Carrie. He's a stonehead. We we went back and forth about it.
Alright, so what can I do to help the situation if there's been unauthorized delegation of. You know? I mean, I ha- I had the bill talking to Paul Mr.
I wouldn't have thought.
Because we had said that if these things were, if work was ordered, then that would be a personal expense.
Work was ordered, it would be a personal claim.
Right.
What do you mean?
Well, that you even have to pay for it personally. This is not the first time work has been done this way.
I don't know what should be.
Yeah, I'm playing the fast dot, but I think we had all decided that if someone ordered work that you hadn't ordered, that the board hadn't ordered, they would personally be responsible for paying for it. Is that, am I understanding that correctly?
But that's what we said.
I had a back and forth with Carrie about considering, he explained to me that the drains in the church needed to be fixed. I said, well, I'll talk about, he stopped me from, he stopped me from closing the water off. That's why that guy showed up because I've already pre-ordered to have that guy.
So it's so you like to take that amount plus one hundred and twenty five dollars, alright, I'll have to call for Mr. Born.
Yeah, I'm not gonna get into a pissing match with this guy. He does what he wants when he wants. He did a gorgeous job on that foundation. I couldn't say enough about that. But this is ridiculous. He's, and as soon as a bill like this, he should say, Bruce, you need to know this. Or this is like, or it doesn't have to be Bruce. It could have been Stan, it could have been anybody else. But he didn't call any select board member. He just went and said, okay, go. Bruce didn't respond back. He's.
You can just, but you you have to talk to him and if you don't wanna talk to him.
No, I don't. No, I don't. I think. No, so uh Harry Bowman can do it on his own, but someone told me.
Oh, I have to call both the vendor and the both vendors. The vendor can't order another vendor to do it. Alright.
Not pleased. I'm getting a lot of applause of vendors. I'm getting really tired of it.
So that's the problem though. And the work change order for the still replacement, Dan, you said you would get that.
Yeah.
Okay, uh energy committee, oh, you finished, I'm sorry.
Yes, sir.
Okay, energy committee, planning commission, that select board chair very quickly. Open meeting law, just remind everybody, do not converse in the emails about making decisions and things because it's not considered open meeting. Please use your Gmail account until, and not personal accounts until we get new accounts set up. Um uh also, when there is a meeting, any meeting, it needs to go on the three bulletin boards, not just go on the websites. And the website is secondary to the bulletin board, so planning commission has the mitigation, select board all have to go onto the bulletin boards. Um other things that are sent in here. Um. Um I was at a three hour meeting for, with the Wyndham County Sheriff's Department about regionalizing police coverage. And what they have asked for is um they wanted to ask not, there's no commitment of finances or going or getting into any contracts with them. But they want to go to the legislature and get them to uh uh to consider regionalizing police. Uh policing in in southern, in Wyndham County. And so uh I don't have a problem saying the town of Brooklyn supports. The research of regionalization of policing services for Wyndham County, and that's all that. If that that that's all right with you, we're not gonna get involved in it. Um otherwise, um the other thing here, I s- uh I do have a list of administrative assistant things that Judy had sent me. I'll send it out to everybody else that she has been doing um as an assistant treasurer. I am also gonna send that information about a statewide in-home vaccination program for people who can't get out of the house to get vaccination. Um vaccinated. I had sent out to you budget thoughts for the checklist. I want everybody to take a look at some of these things, including the salary. And we also need to consider when we do the highway fund at the next meeting, again, considering um replacement costs and maintenance costs of all of our equipment that we now have. And also considering the grants, if you notice, I put on the grants that uh Colin had given Mark, which included the uh Ellenware Road Culvert Better Roads Program. Municipal Roads General Permit Work, and also considering that we have to think about the cost of hazard mitigation plan implementation. Mark, I was gonna give this to you earlier, but I'm gonna give it to you now. Uh this is a summary of, I think, what FEMA wants when they look at maintenance records for our our culverts. They're saying April and May, we check the culverts on these roads, May and June, we check the culverts on other roads. I'll send this out to everybody as well, just that you have it. But I think that's something that you can put down in uh FEMA. Um we did get our new, put it in, I'd like it to be in the minutes that every year at this time, we have to re-register our um. Us, our governmental system award management code. And we have that done, which is not a done's number, it's. Can't think of it, it's more another number, it's.
UEI number.
Yeah, UEI, yes, UEI number. Um. We have the information through Colin to review. Oh, website development. We all got some information from Marjorie Ray. Uh I attended a, Stan also did attended a web webinar on. A a disability and there is something called WCAG, Web Content Accessibility Guidelines. I'm gonna share this with um everybody, including Marjorie. Um to see if our website meets the guidelines. If you have a website, you know, municipal website, you have to have certain things that need to be included in it. Um so that has to be done. I'll send it to you, yes. And we did that. Um. I asked at the last meeting for volunteers and Stan and Paul, you both said if you would consider, would like me to consider you to be uh an assistant hazard mitigation person. But honestly, I think I would like to see who, how many people, how many residents continue to come to these hazard mitigation what I meetings. Because I would like to get someone besides a select board member involved. I think the goal is, it's not, I don't have a problem doing the work with the committee. But the goal is to make sure that there's somebody on the outside that is going to be supportive of the program and keep it going for the next five years. Just just remind us that we have, should meet twice a year, once a year on hazard mitigation. So I would like to see, I know uh we said that uh Oliver Ames might be good, but he didn't come to the last meeting and then Mike, Mike um. Uh Mike Barn Farm.
Yeah, the associate.
Mike, Mike the associate said he'd like to be helpful and I think he would, he would be good, but I wanna see who really shows the effort to come to the meeting before I approach them to ask them.
Pastor Klein's called you and it was also at the last meeting. I don't know.
What's he at the last meeting?
Yeah, he's standing right in that chair. You weren't here, buddy.
Oh. I wasn't there.
Sunday, Saturday morning. No, not hazard mitigation. It was uh the other MTA, MTAP.
Oh, that was a great story.
And he's willing to, he's willing to put input, so.
Oh, okay.
That's what I.
Yeah, no, I had, I had made other plans for that date as well. So I just wanted to let you know that those are the things. Alright, at this point now, any other topics requested by the select board not requiring a vote? Hearing none, emails, regular mails, I think pretty much nothing. Uh agenda for the next meeting would be administrative assistant. Um we could talk about the two FEMA storms again and. Anything else that we come up with? The tree RFP.
Wasn't the budget.
And what?
Budget coming.
And the road budget. We're gonna be doing the highway budget as well. Okay, anything else, please let me know ahead of time and uh our next meeting is December sixth. Um and I am going to adjourn this evening's meeting. Meeting's adjourned at, and I don't know, my watch is dead, nine eleven.
Nine eleven, whatever.
Stand.
Thank you very much.
This meeting was recorded by Falls Area Community Television located at One Hospital Court, Bellows Falls, Vermont. If you would like a copy of the meeting, our phone number is eight zero two four six three one six one three. Or email us at fact eight ten at gmail dot com. Falls Area Community TV, keeping government honest.